Recording in progress.
Did you ever see that thing I said today about the Los Angeles article, the Los Angeles?
No, I didn't see it. I've been busy all day. This is too late for me to see stuff.
Shall we do the minutes? I will not participate because I've.
I had one correction, manufacturers.
Oh, yeah. And this then?
That was the only thing I had.
I didn't have any. The other thing I saw in the third and fourth paragraph, it says, "Tim," I would change it to say, "Tim Cook acted as chair."
Chair. What does it say? Just Tim?
Tim comma, "acting as chair," as John said. Yeah. And then, "Tim Cook," in the, at the end of item one, the motion passed P A S S E D. Unanimous, yeah. That's it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve his amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second? All those in favor? So, unat-- well, however you want to say it.
Call it unanimous.
Call it unanimous. Alright, so, shall we just continue on?
Yes.
At some point tonight, I will discuss, Rich sent me a couple of emails about the scheduling, and we can discuss that as well.
Thank you. Are there any members in the public here? Not that I see. Okay.
And are we gonna get a select board representative to this meeting?
Uh, should, but I have a feeling he is not available for the next two meetings.
Oh, including this one?
I hadn't heard anything from him, but I've heard something of another conversation, a bit of another conversation today, saying he was going on vacation for two weeks.
Alright, so we'll just have to carry on. Any word about Rich Mengi? Is he coming?
Uh, no, Rich Mengi will not be here.
Okay, so it's, it looks like us. So, you guys, Tim, why don't you... Where shall we carry on from?
Well, last meeting, we went over all the input from people.
Right.
We went through it right, you know.
Right, I watched, I watched the first half hour.
Oh, then you fell asleep, that's right.
No, I fell asleep. And so did the cameras, apparently. Because after a half hour, there's no--
Black camera?
Yeah, there's no video. But there's, there's sound, but I just couldn't take it at that point. So, but where do you want to pick up?
Well, I thought we'd finished.
Yeah, we finished.
We finished? We have a zoning amendment? I mean--
Yeah, we finished with the input.
Oh, with the input. Oh, no, but I mean, so you, but you did the eight, you had discussions about the eighteen foot thing. I sent you--
Right.
You had said, I mean, at least I could do that, you had said that it would be good to get some input from a professional, so I sent that. So, my understanding, he's thought that eighteen was reasonable, but in his specs, it said, could be a maximum of twenty.
And then, and then, just to make it weird, I happened to look at the print, and so it says that the height from the bottom of the pedestal to the top of the tractor is twenty, twenty feet. But then, the height of the pedestal itself looks like it's a half a foot. So, you know.
So, is that the movable one, or that?
Yeah, so, here, you look at the--
So, did they follow dirt around it?
Well, so, David, this is a question, we want to let people do this kind of stuff.
I would measure from the base of the pedestal.
Part of the pedestal's buried, so is it the buried part, or?
No, the top of the pedestal, to me, would be the, which, yes, people could play games and put in a twenty-foot pedestal and then put. But, you know.
So, what is the base of the pedestal, then?
I think where the pedestal being--
There's a little bit of--
Like a foundation, and then you would measure from, I should say, the top of that.
So, it's where the tracker itself, so say, say, this is the tracker, is this the top of the pedestal, wherever that intersects?
To me, would be the, that would make sense to say that.
And so, it's not the concrete portion?
Yes, where the, you know, where the, the actual--
It's the intersection, right there.
So, in actuality, it would be higher?
It might be a little bit higher.
Whatever the, the height of the foundation, yeah.
And, you know, if they--
So, so--
It seems to me that would be a reasonable way of looking at it, saying, you know, unless you're putting your four-foot concrete pedestal above the ground and then going.
So--
Yeah, there wouldn't be any need for that.
So, how does that work out here? So, that's like twenty and a half feet?
That would be twenty and a half. I mean, if, if that were correct, the six inches of, of that base thing there, the half a foot of that base thing--
Yeah, but it looks, I mean, I guess what's not clear from here, from this-- It, I mean, it has a line on top of it. So, it's not clear that that is actually above the ground. In fact, I would read it as not above the ground. But, I mean, the point is, we're talking about a pretty, this isn't a big deal, eighteen feet, you know, is eighteen feet to twenty-one feet? I mean, it's another three feet, but, I mean, who cares? Do we care?
So, that, I mean, that's a great question, and I don't think I care. If we wrote twenty-one feet, that would cover all the eighteen feet people that we're used to seeing, that would completely cover that gadget there that goes as high as twenty above the mounting platform, which they suggest.
Actually, this says, says maximum height, twenty feet.
Right. But then, the diagram shows another six inch--
Right, and it looks to me like that's underground.
Maybe.
Because it's got two arrows down.
They're measuring, you know.
They're measuring from the top. And, and this is, this is underneath.
Is it that most people want their pet, their base covered, so they don't want to see concrete? Does that be aesthetic?
Well, if you look, if, take a look at it, it looks to me like they're measuring from here.
Yeah.
And this is, you know, they drew a line here, so I'm assuming this is underground.
Well, maybe not. This could be ground level.
It could be. We don't know.
Right.
So, so what he, what he said in the email is he thought eighteen feet was, was reasonable.
The hammer has eighteen, right?
Yeah.
Just because it's based on everything that's come through the planning office there.
So, maybe, one way of handling it is that it's eighteen feet, and you can get another three feet with a special exception.
You know, I mean, that, yes, right. And, you know, I looked to David, what's the easiest, clearest wording that we can give so that people that want to do the right thing can do it of the least hassle?
Well, I would say, if you're, you're going to settle the limit, you need to define where that limit starts and ends. So, if you're saying, you know, eighteen feet from the ground to the highest point on the structure, then, you know, say, you know, that would make sense if you want to put in language for a special exception for above that.
But it sounds like you, you might want to measure from the top of the base, not the ground, so.
Well, you know, the, the only thing is that people, you know, is always--
Can game it.
It can game it if they want to, you know, if they need a little more height to get above a shadow of a building, then they, they make their pedestal, your base, the, the concrete base, two feet higher. And that raises it up, gets them the height they need. So, it can be game, and so--
Let me ask this question of the board. Eighteen feet is, is pretty tall. Twenty-one, what are we talking about? Twenty-one, it would be twenty-one and a half?
Well, it'd be twenty and a half.
Oh, twenty and a half?
Right.
So, are there, I haven't thought about it a lot, but, I mean, eighteen feet is high, twenty and a half feet is two and a half feet higher, is that, is that a problem for people if we just said twenty and a half feet?
I'd go twenty-one, just to make it--
Or twenty-one?
Right.
I mean, I-- Then it gets to be another three feet. I mean, it does, starts to get to pretty, to be pretty--
But, let me ask you this, who's, how many people here can look at a, a poll and tell whether it's eighteen or twenty-one feet?
Oh, I can't, I can't tell that at all, but I can tell, I can tell, that's not how people are going to view it. They're not going to view it by, is that, is that the twenty-one feet? They're gonna go like, "My god, that thing is huge." That's how they're gonna react.
But, they're gonna do that no matter what.
Well--
Many people will do that no matter what.
Many people will do that at eighteen, and more people will do it at twenty-one.
Yeah, I guess, the, the peak of our house, you know, the peak of our house is twenty-nine feet. So, that would only be three people under the--
That's pretty, that's, that's really tall.
I mean, the other thing is, if we found that a third of the people coming in hadn't got special exception, we could change, we might change.
So, what I hear is, you're gonna pick a number and then say, if you need more, get a special exception.
I don't know what we're saying. I don't know.
I guess I'm sort of opposing that.
Oh, okay. So, eighteen and then a special exception?
And, and, you know, we would need to give the zoning board some guidance as to what, you know, certainly not forty-one.
That's a good, a good point. So, if we're gonna give them guidance, what would that, what would be the, what would be the requirement?
First thing I would say, if you're gonna give them guidance, give them guidance as to why you would allow--
That's what I'm saying.
You're not just the, how much you would, that you should allow, but why--
So, why, is my question?
Right.
Why are we giving, why do it that way, I guess?
Instead of just saying twenty-one?
Yeah. I mean-- Because, because odds are, they're gonna get the special exception. Right? Isn't that?
Well, if there's, especially if there's no guidance for them, you know, if you don't provide the zoning board--
Well, we would. I mean, that's what we're discussing. We would, we would provide guidance, but what is that guidance?
Yeah, well, and then the neighbors might have, because if I went to a special exception, then the neighbors that you know, maybe a neighbor would have someone to say that to.
So, would the guidance be that if the neighbors object, you can't have it?
Well, that's up to the PBA.
Oh, no, no, we have, we have to write the guidance.
Okay, now I will, now I'm prepared to say, let's just say twenty-one feet.
Okay, well, how does everybody feel about that?
I guess, I don't think it's gonna matter. I mean, and then it depends where we measure it from, because if you measure it from the foundation, as David said, people can make it twenty-one feet anywhere. You know, if they just embrace the foundation, so.
Well, that's why I said, you know, it should be defined--
Alright, so how would we define it?
I would, let's, I would start out by saying, let's define it as, at ground level.
Yeah, I think--
Twenty-one feet from the ground level at the base. Yeah, and then, that way, if they're, you know, if they go and have six inches above for the, the foundation pedestal, or on base, and then stick the pedestal on the top of that, they still have, you know, give them a little bit of, you know, I think the issue being, you know, eighteen feet, that seems to be the maximum height of these systems. And that does not leave any leeway if, you know, and so, you know, if I have a neighbor that's mad, and, you know, they come out and say, "Listen, it's eighteen feet, two inches."
They go over there and they measure, and say, "That's eighteen feet, one inch."
Right, then, you know, what am I gonna, I'm gonna tell them, add some soil? You know, because it's, you know, cover that up, and, you know, that, that's--
So, do you want a tracker, you know, one that, are we measuring it when it's perfectly vertical?
Yes, the, at the most--
Actually, in, in that diagram, it looks like that only goes to sixty degrees. The, the angle that's there looks like the maximum that it goes to.
Yeah, which would make sense, because you probably wouldn't really ever want it to be vertical.
No, because the sun's not--
You wouldn't get any--
The sun's up there.
Yeah. Actually, the, a lot of the trackers go completely vertical at night.
This one said, this particular one says it goes horizontal at night.
What was horizontal?
Or in the wind.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Alright, so what we, is--
Twenty-one?
Would the, would the wording be from ground level?
Yeah.
And, and, I'd like everybody to chime in. Is everybody okay?
I'd say, ground level at the base of the pedestal, because--
From the base of, or--
Or at the base of the pedestal.
Ground level.
And the only reason I say that is, you know, you're talking, your system said we'd be, what, twenty, almost twenty feet across, or twelve, fourteen feet across.
Width is twenty-five and three quarters by twenty-one and a half.
Yeah, the ground can change a lot.
Right, you, you can have a lot of variation, and so they could, again, say, "Well, ground level here is only sixteen feet, but down here is twenty-five."
Alright, so from, from ground level at the base of the pedestal.
So, what is the base of the pedestal?
Well, that's where, again, then, yep.
Sorry.
No, that's, that's the question.
Because that's, that, that covers trackers, but it doesn't handle fixed systems very well.
But I think that's, I think that's okay for fixed systems. I mean, the height of the ground level, oh, the height--
See, that's the thing, it's, uh--
Oh, the height, so it's, it's kind of, it wants to be the highest point above ground below it.
At the base.
At, but--
Say that in English?
Yeah, well, no, but if you, if, if you have a tracker--
Yeah.
You want to measure from the, the bottom of the--
The bottom of--
From the ground level at the center of it--
Okay.
To that, that height.
Okay, I got that.
We got that. If you've got a row of arrays, they're like this--
Yeah.
The highest point wants to be highest above, oh, the ground level below the highest point. So, you've got a slope.
Yeah, no, I, I'm--
You, you got it, but I--
So, you're, you've got a slope.
Yeah.
And if it faces south, it's right, and you're gonna stick these puppies on there.
Yeah.
So, the slope goes like this.
Yeah. Okay, I'm with you.
You don't want it to stick up more than--
That, from that, from that angle.
From whatever is, whatever is below, whatever's directly below, you know, take your straight--
Straight down, yeah.
Take your plumb out, drop it down from there, and no more than twenty-one feet.
So, what would the wording for that be?
I don't know. But, yes, I mean, that's, that's, you know, the same kind of thing, that if it's a flat ground, it won't be more than twenty-one feet.
So, how do we word that?
It seems to me, if you have a, if you're putting a, an array of panels on a slope, you want, don't want to take the lowest point to the highest point, the, the lowest ground point where it connects, because that would be really--
Just for simplicity, it can't be higher than twenty-one feet above ground at the height point.
Yeah, I think you could say, at the top of the panel, measure plumb to the ground.
Right.
So, that plumb means it's a perfectly straight line from that.
So, could we say twenty-one feet plumb from ground level?
From the top of the panel.
You might find some carpenters who understand that, but--
It's the highest point.
Yeah, basically, twenty-one feet, the highest point can be no greater than twenty-one feet from ground level. Or from the ground to that point, highest point.
Okay, but we gotta--
Yeah, no, I know that, but--
So, so the highest point--
Maybe we can say vertical instead of plumb, maybe.
Yeah.
So, the highest point can be no greater-- No greater than twenty-one feet?
Measure vertically from the ground to the highest point of the--
Measured vertically from what?
From the ground.
The ground.
The record.
Yeah.
The highest point.
Vertically, height of the--
We already said vertically, from the ground to the highest point.
Average height of the building, the height of the building above the average ground level.
The zoning calls, it, does that, it basically, it's an average?
Uh, that average, that's a--
Right, well, and we're talking about a much smaller--
Yes.
And I also think, let's say you have, you know, an array that kind of goes up a slope, you know, and not, is not quite-- It's not going directly up the slope at the angle that, where it's facing. You could have a point where if you average the slope, it might drop that--
Why do we have to--
So, you're talking about creating an average over the whole--
Oh, no, I don't want to create, I'm saying, I don't want to create that average for this, because I think there are cases where that average slope would prohibit you from putting something in that's actually very reasonable.
Right, so it'd be for each segment of an installation, right?
Each panel?
Well, it's not, it wouldn't be, you can't say each panel because, each array.
Each--
Because you, you have panels that make up arrays.
Each distinct array.
Yeah, and then, those are all linked together, and usually in the same structure.
Help me out here, because I got, I, I must have missed something, but the last I was conscious of was the highest point can be no greater than twenty-one feet measured vertically from the ground to the highest point.
Yeah, you don't need to say the highest point again.
To that point.
Says the highest point, maybe no greater--
From the ground to, to, from the ground?
Yeah.
Yes, period, yeah.
Okay, so, the highest point can be no greater than twenty-one feet measured vertically from the ground?
Yeah.
How did, I must have mislized, how did we get over to the averages?
Well, we were talking about how a building--
But was it, is, but--
I don't think it's relevant.
Oh, oh, okay, so, I mean--
I was just--
Okay.
Under the zoning currently, a structure--
Got it.
You use an average. I don't think that that's a good--
Right, right, I don't either.
For this.
So, can we say the highest point of any part of an array, or of any part of a solar energy system may be no greater than twenty-one feet measured vertically from the ground?
Of any--
That sounds good.
Of any part of an S E S?
Of an S E S.
I think that's an excellent--
Yeah, that's good, because, yeah, because if your building is on a hill, then--
Right, yeah.
Then it gets so bad.
And, and, it's, it's like, if there's two, a tracker could--
Can I?
A tracker, let's see, so, the sun's over here, so the tracker's like this. So, tracker is like this, and if the ground goes like this, the high point, I'm sorry, John. If the high point is here, this will be, this will be less than twenty-one feet. The only time it would be a problem would be if the ground actually goes like this.
But it's, but wouldn't it still be, this, it's still, but it's vertical from here?
Yeah, what we, what we would say is, this is the, the twenty-one--
Oh, and that's the high point?
Right.
But, but it won't be from, from the pedestal?
And, and, so we need to make sure that whatever we write--
Yeah.
Handles this case. Not many people are gonna--
Yeah, I--
Put a tracker on the backside of the hill.
That presumes that there's a hillside, that you're letting it shade it.
Because there's gonna be a tree here.
I, you know, I, I'm--
I think I'm not worried about it.
I'm starting, yeah, I mean, we're already moving it up three feet.
Yep.
And that's to allow this, this margin for error.
Yep.
To add more margin of error on top of the margin, it's just, then, what are we doing?
Yep.
Alright, so, so if people come with, "The highest point of any part of an S E S can be no greater than twenty-one feet measured vertically from the ground."
I'm just-- Replace can with may.
The highest part of any part of an S E S may be, shall be. Shall.
Shall.
Why may?
Right.
So, we're not allowed on may, presumably, you're giving permission.
Yeah, shall be no greater than--
So, say it again.
Okay, the highest point--
Yeah.
Of any part--
Okay.
Tell me you're, you're ready. Of an S E S-- Shall be no greater than twenty-one feet measured vertically from the ground. I mean, that's, we're not, you know, this is, we, we can revisit this, but that's a--
Yeah.
Seems like a pretty good--
I like it.
Starting point. I'm sure you will revisit it at least three times before. I'm sure. So, does anybody have a problem with the twenty-one feet?
No, because I don't think it's gonna matter. Plus, they're gonna get a special exception anyway, so.
Right, exactly. Okay, so, so that's the eighteen-foot thing, and then you had, you talked about the historical districts, and people were talking about the back of the lots, and so what is, what is, what are those people's sense of historical districts, or places that--
My sense was that, I think we were sort of agreeing, I think, that we were gonna maybe prohibit them from being right on the common, you know, between the, the house, like on the backside of the common, not anyway we put one there anyway, but you never know. You know, right between the house and the common.
How would you, how would you write that?
It'd be in the front yard.
Of any house that--
In the line, in the line common district.
Oh, in any house, and not, not just those that are on the common?
Well, what are you trying to do?
I don't know. I wasn't--
I'm not sure you can spot just those houses on the common, I think.
Just say the line district.
You have to do the whole district.
The whole district.
So, so that would just be, so it could be in the side setback, or in the, in, in the rear yard, but not in the front?
In the front yard? How do you define front yard?
The distance, or the area between the building face and, or, and the people who are on a corner are gonna have two fronts, so.
Alright, area between the--
Building face.
Between building--
And a public road.
Face, can we have that definition?
Probably not.
The, the setback definition for the line common district is the mean of the five buildings.
Yeah, we're not using that. It's like, my whole lot is in my, 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 my whole lot is in the front setback. And it goes into my neighbor's side, my neighbor's side yard is in, is part of my front setback. So, that's just, it doesn't work.
So, we'll have to define building face?
Yeah. You can just get that off the internet, I believe, and I'm aware it has building face definition, but you can--
So, how, how do we say that?
It just may not be located--
S E S is--
May not be located in the--
Shall not be--
Shall not be--
Located.
Be--
Between the--
Building face.
Located in the area between, or do we, do we need the area?
Yes.
Yes.
Between, between the building face and a public road?
Yeah.
And in, in the line, in the line common district?
Because you, you don't want to indicate something that's just in front of the building.
Right, you want the whole area.
The whole area.
Okay, I bet a building face means the total area of a building between the inner surface of the ground and the heat to the any architectural elevation. Is that just on the internet? So--
Alright, we'll, we'll work on that.
Yeah, because we need, you'd have to say, we need the road facing--
Well, we're just talking about what is the building face.
Yeah.
And then we're saying, there's a perpendicular area between the building face and--
And the public road.
Public road. So--
That area.
Yep.
I mean, I think it's unlikely that there's any area where somebody would put--
Well, you--
It's still not anyway, but--
Right, I mean, you, let's say, you're down feeding this--
Yeah, because they're, they're the face itself, yeah.
We've gotten feedback that, you know, relative, I mean, percentage-wise, significant percentage of the feedback we've gotten expressing concern about these in, in historic districts, so it seems like we should, we should do that.
So, this is in both the line common district and the--
I don't know. Is it?
Well, you talked about the line common district and the line center district.
The line, okay.
Yeah.
And the line--
There's not going to be a whole lot of area that, right, especially on the south side of the line center district where--
Yeah.
You're actually going to be able to put something--
But we're gonna address both.
Yeah, but I would say that, if you're gonna, pretty much anybody that has, that their property ends, if a grant broke, is not going to be able to put one, because you don't have to put it in the front of the house, and then, because a grant broke, you're not going to be able to put it in the back of the house, so, just be aware of that, that's--
But the fact is, it wouldn't work anyway.
You're probably right, yeah, that it, you're maybe in the shade.
Yeah, that, that hill really blocks it.
Well, I think it, it, you know, you never know what, what can happen, and, and it'll, it can reassure people that there's a mechanism, should that happen. So, then, the, the other part that, that I survived to was your discussion of scenic roads. And, and what I wrote down is that upgraded utilities would not be okay, so I don't, I don't know whether that reflects exactly what you were saying.
I think that, yeah, I think we were, I think we were saying that we, we didn't--
I think that, yeah, I think we were, I think we were saying that we, we didn't want added hole, like three faves.
Right, it basically, if the system required upgrading the utilities along the road, then it wouldn't be allowed.
So how would we say this? Along scenic roads, scenic roads, whatever.
Any change to the existing maybe?
So wouldn't it be large for large SESs, because.
Yeah, you're not gonna be, yeah, changing it for a small system.
Yeah, so for large SESs is.
Along scenic roads.
No, no, it was brought up that it could be not on a scenic road, that point is we don't wanna have utilities which serve the large SES be put on a scenic road. So they could go overland, right? They could go, um.
So how would you say it?
Um, I, so let me just take care. He said no.
Take your time.
Okay.
Thank you. Did you see that? That's the half foot, because those. You have a great solution. Just put a.
Okay, what about this? So, no large SES may be permitted, which requires improved utility installation on a scenic road.
So.
So on a scenic, does that mean?
Yeah.
Utility installation is on the scenic road. No large SES may be permitted, which requires improved utility installation on a scenic road.
I'm just, I'm just.
So if it touches the scenic road and then.
There's nothing to do, it's all, it's all about if there's utility installation on the scenic road.
Meaning, but if there's.
What does that mean?
One pole, even if there's just one pole on the scenic road, then you have, yeah.
Tough nuggies.
And. And, and just read it one more time?
Okay, no large SES may be permitted, which requires improved utility installation on a scenic road.
And what does improved utility installation? I mean, is it, is that just obvious? Is that obvious, or do we need to drill down?
More wires, maybe?
I mean, what, what does that mean?
I think what you mean is that, I mean, currently, the pole's there, and it's got one wire on the top, and it's got another wire about three feet below it, and that's just the way the power runs all the way certainly north of town.
You know, telephone, I think.
And then, and the telephone runs underneath that, and so.
And then there's line fiber.
And then line fiber actually runs above the telephone, but I don't, I don't wanna digress. The, and that's fine, and if you're putting in a forty kilowatt array at your house, that can all run on, on that existing wire. If you wanted to put in an acre.
You're gonna need the two faves.
You're gonna need more wires coming out. And what we, what, what we're trying to prevent here, and I think this is good wording, is just, we can't call up the utility company and say, get your bulldozers and your cherry pickers out and put this stuff right down the road.
Does, does that language, is that language clear, is what, is all that?
Yeah, that's all we wanna prevent, I mean, it could be that, that acre installation could go through the property and it, and it goes to a class five road, which is not a scenic road, and they just run it overland to that frontage instead. So it doesn't prevent them from doing that installation, it just prevents them.
So could, could you read it again slowly?
Okay, no large SES may be permitted.
Hold on, hold, no large.
Yep.
SES shall be.
Shall be permitted.
Be permitted.
Which requires. Or I guess maybe it's a that, requires.
Okay.
Improved utility installation on.
Improved utility.
Installation.
Utility.
On a scenic road?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, maybe, you know, um, and we could, or in parentheses, why including wires and poles or not, but, you know, it, I, I'd rather leave it pretty broad and, and general.
Right.
Because what we're trying to do is not say you can't have it on a property that touches a scenic road or is visible from a scenic road, we just don't want you messing with the utilities on the scenic road.
Okay.
And maybe that's not strong enough, but.
It's a starting point.
It's a point, yep, and, uh, yeah, you might be able to see it from the scenic road because they're putting it in a field where there are no trees between the field and the scenic road, but at least the wires won't change and the poles won't change on the scenic road. But you might see the installation, so that's.
Okay, so the other thing, uh, I wanted to ask you all, you know, we, we have this, this earlier, the thing from the end of last year that we all got, um, but I do recall that we just, at some point decided to abandon, abandon that and putting it under accessory uses, and that we were gonna just give it its own life. Am I the only one that remembers that, or, or do other people?
No, I, and I'm actually a bit better about this tech.
Non-accessory use.
Right, because we were getting into like, well, who's gonna use this electricity?
Right, right, and, and we, we shifted away from that approach.
So, so we're getting rid of D, the one that we did.
Well, I mean, but that's the, I, I'm, I'm, it raises the question of whether we should really be following this at all, or much.
Well, because none of it's applied.
None of it applied.
The D is, yeah, except we don't, we have to get rid of this electrical D, but there's already the lot.
Yeah, so, that, that's the point, is we, we, we need to reconceive.
We're coming up with the, the, the major bullet points.
Yeah, we, we're doing the major bullet points, and then we're gonna have to put it in the envelope of, and what's that envelope?
I got one more to throw in.
Sure.
Did you get a chance to check my math? I did, I emailed you back, but I, I was like, it's a quarter or seven, five times ago. Um, based on all your assumptions, yes, that your math was, in my limited.
Are they, are they reasonable? So let me, let me tell you what, I, I asked Dave to check my math, uh, because we realized we don't wanna regulate this by forty kilowatts. Because we don't have, probably don't even have the right to regulate by kilowatts, but.
That was never the intention.
Right, exactly, so, like, how big can a forty kilowatt array be? So I did the calculations to say solar panel is three and a quarter by five and a half feet, and it's tipped, it covers, it looks like the, um, uh, the, the lot coverage for each panel is fourteen point seven square feet. And that's seventy percent? That's, actually, it's, it's eighty-two percent, it's a thirty-five degrees, which is what, um, revision tells me they installed.
Yeah, that, that's, and then thirty-five is the number I've always used.
So, so each panel is fourteen point seven square feet, um, a forty kilowatt array at an average of three hundred watts per panel means you need a hundred thirty-three panels.
This is a loophole, but, you know, that's your problem, not mine.
So you need a hundred thirty-three panels, a hundred thirty-three panels at fourteen point seven square feet per comes up to a lot coverage of nineteen fifty-five square feet, one thousand nine hundred.
One thing, it should, not a lot, they say lot coverage, but it should be a footprint.
Ooh, yes, thank you.
Because it's.
He's right, talking. So a footprint of how much?
So, one thousand nine hundred fifty-five would be.
Let's call it two thousand.
Yes.
Now, just as a, um.
An eighth and an eighth or?
Um, two thousand square feet?
No, the, the five thousand, uh, fifty thousand.
Forty-five, forty-three thousand.
Forty-three, two, five, sixty, forty.
Two and a half would be more, yeah, twelve would be.
So, just for, um, comparison, um, I pulled spec sheets off of two different, um, solar panels that have been installed, I pulled these off out of the permits.
Oh, yeah.
You mean, you mean real data?
Yeah, really, and one of them is a three hundred and eighty watt and one of them is a four. Four hundred watt panel. And, um, let's see, here's the front page, so for the three hundred and eighty watt panels, um, and they are, let me get my glasses 'cause I can't read anything that's small, um, so they are forty-one inches by, uh, sixty-eight and a half inches for the three hundred and eighty, and that works out to be about seventeen hundred square feet, sixteen ninety watt.
So.
Still above the fifteen hundred.
Well, doing the same calculation.
Doing the exact same calculation.
The forty kilowatts, but it's only seventeen.
Seventeen hundred.
Seventeen hundred.
So what were we saying for the, for the forty watt, we were saying like forty, were we saying four thousand square feet?
No, it wasn't, it's, it's not that date. Actually, David has, you have one more data point that's.
No, no, but I mean, what were we?
Yes, as much as four thousand.
We said as much as four thousand square feet, so it's much less.
It's as much less.
Right, so we're, we're talking in the neighborhood of two thousand square.
Yep, and so that's great, yep. Looking at, um, a fourth, four hundred watt panels, again, these were installed recently in a, in a house here. They are seventy-one by, uh, forty, or seventy-two by forty.
Okay.
Um, and that comes out to, you know, a hundred panels, and that works out to be, um, just a little over sixteen hundred, sixteen hundred and thirty-eight square feet.
So two thousand would be the high side.
Two thousand would be the high side to get to forty thousand kilowatts.
Yeah, because I remember, um, I mean, I, several reactions, and one of them was, was one that you told me that the guy from some solar place told you, wow, that forty thousand is pretty generous.
Yeah, well, it's a, you know, it's a, a pretty.
Pretty good sized thing. So two thousand, um, would be, you know, better.
Well, yeah, and as the years go by, it'll probably get smaller.
Right.
Well, regard, I mean, as the years go by, this, this, this is gonna be a dynamic amendment. It's not gonna sit there for, for, you know, twenty years, there's no way.
But I mean, it'll just get better, you know.
Yeah, right.
And, and, you know, if people do install, um, more efficient panels, and they get the four, the, the new fable four fifty watt panels five years from now, God bless them, you know.
Sure, and, and five years from now, if there are, I mean, I imagine five years from now, they're gonna, we're gonna be potentially have a very different situation, and we're, whoever's on the board is gonna have to go back in and, and adjust this.
And I don't.
I don't think this is gonna be more than a, I mean, five years is a long horizon for this amendment to, to stay the same.
So I'm, I'm comfortable.
The two thousand is, that's good news.
It's a nice round number.
Yeah.
It's, it's halfway defensible.
Well, it's, it's, it sounds very.
Reasonably defensible, we, you know, if somebody says, where the heck did you get that number? Well, it came out to nineteen fifty-five.
Right.
Using.
And the forty, forty kilowatts is, is just a round number, it's not a magic number anymore.
It's certainly enough for practically anybody.
Yeah, it's an example.
Okay, so that's great, thank you. Um, so that's for the, the small.
Those extra.
Small SES.
Yes.
So for the, obviously, the issue with a large SES is, again, we might wanna do a similar calculation.
Do we want to say anything over to them?
Well, yeah, but we have to have an upper limit.
Right.
Is not anything over up to, you know, covering all of line and so.
Well, I, I would look at, um, what, you know, some of the, uh, systems on the Vermont side are, um, what, you know, look at the size, look at how much kilowattage, and then say, is this good for line?
Well, I, I think, and, uh, I, I know I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, but I will encourage the correction. The impression I came away with is at, at least remembering at least somebody on the board and other people kind of concurring was that we're not looking to encourage, um, a commercial usage where somebody could come in and chop down a forest and put up, you know, twenty acres of, of, uh, solar panels. So, the question is, what is, what, I mean, we do have a number here. We, uh, we were talking about, what were we talking about?
If you know those ones when you drive up eighty-nine toward Wilton or beyond, you know, you're looking, there's huge, you seen those? There's huge arrays on that.
Oh, right, yes.
I don't know how big they are, but they, I mean, I've only seen them on the interstate, they're huge. You guys can know how many.
So, oh, no, no, so the two thousand is, is what we had on here.
Geniuses.
Yeah, so the two thousand is what we had, so for the large solar system, we had two thousand on up to twenty thousand square feet. So I, I think the, you know, now is the time where we need to.
Have any.
To say whether that twenty thousand square feet is what we want. I mean, that's something we don't need to decide tonight, but people should think about, and maybe we should, if we can apply similar calculations.
Well, right, I mean, uh, twenty thousand is ten times.
Ten times that, and then that's, well, how, that's what we were working from, four hundred kilowatts. I mean, is that, I think the question is, are people comfortable with that at this point?
And, you know, I, I don't know who all would wanna do this, so, I mean, you know, one of the weird questions.
The thing I'm, I'm thinking of who might wanna do this are obviously people with a lot of means or people who wanna do a larger, um, net metering.
Right, sure.
I mean, that's really what it's for.
Yeah, I mean, if ten people got together, if they're relatively close together, they can put in their own system and do all their houses.
Well, they, they don't, I, is it true that you, I just worry I get confused, um, maybe that's the distinction between the net metering?
System in South Carolina.
Uh-huh.
Hey, that's one of them. How big is that?
There's several, there's several.
I don't know how big it is, I just pulled it up on Google Earth.
So is the distinction between net metering and a community solar array? What is the distinction?
I think, so net metering, if you think about it, is, um, ten people get together.
Do they have to, do they have to live near each other?
They don't have to live, they're usually within a community.
Yeah.
Um, and playing a solarized line, that project.
Right.
Everyone who got together said, okay, we're going to put in a system of a certain size.
We're all gonna put in some money.
No, we're gonna all put our own systems in, and put them in on our house. We're going to have them grid tied, so they're tied to the grid, and because there's a certain amount of power that's going to get produced by all of these people together.
Beyond what they're gonna need.
Well, it has nothing to do with what they're gonna need. It's how much power is being created by all the systems together. Uh, the power company will give you a better rate.
Oh, than if you did it individual?
Than if you did it individual.
I see.
Because you're guaranteeing the power company a larger, uh, amount of power. So the more people that joined, um, the net metering group, the larger amount of power the power company could depend on.
But you're selling it back to the yard, right?
Well, that, yes, that's, that's, and you're selling it all back to the power company.
And so you're not using it at all for yourself, in your house.
Well, I mean, in, in a sense you are, because you're getting paid for that, for that power.
Yeah, I don't understand, if you're using it in your house, you're not selling it, that doesn't go with the power.
It, it, you're tying it to the grid, you're not tying it to your house, your house is on a separate meter.
So, you know, I understand.
So where would that be tied in? Would that be tied in directly to the wire?
Yeah, there, there is a system that basically, you know, when you look at the power out on the, the lines, you know, it has a sine wave.
Yeah.
And your system will sink itself to that sine wave.
So, or, now I'm really confused, like on my site, I, I can't put in solar because I have, the trees are just.
Yep.
But the guy from revision came, 'cause I have a small field that's right near the wires.
Yep.
But he said, you know, you can't put it, attach it to the wires.
So. It needs to go, it basically, in reality, what you're doing is it goes through your meter, it runs your meter backwards.
Oh, so it's gotta go to your meter and then back?
Runs your meter backwards.
Yeah, okay, that's, that makes sense, okay.
So, I mean, that's.
So, so for people, people like in my situation would need a community solar.
Right, right, the community is what, if you go up to Fairly and you go into the se, as you go Route Five before you get into town, you'll see two separate um systems. Those are community systems where people have bought in to finance that system.
Right. And then they get credit.
The bands, people that came around to all the houses and said, hey, would you like to buy in this?
So is that like, does it go back through their houses and?
No, that goes directly to directly to the, to the, into the grid, to the power company.
No.
Yeah. I was, I was reading, I've been reading a little bit about what the power companies are doing, and EverSource is thinking about raising their rates to twenty-two cents and all this. They're also saying that they're gonna start paying people less for the electricity.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the problems is that when you're doing this, you're you're working with whatever numbers are available at the time, which are completely.
Yeah.
Okay, so it comes down to where you may never get a payback, but what you're doing is making cleaner energy.
Right. Yeah, that's the point.
So, that's, you you, you know, for some people, the payback is like the big thing, but the other, you know, it's like.
Yeah. Well, but but it but the, I mean, for people with with, let's just call it the means, it's not much of an issue. But for people who wanna do this, and it is an issue.
Twenty-year payback isn't gonna work for most people, and that's what.
No, I'm not talking about a twenty-year payback, I'm talking about just being able to afford to participate.
And that's what.
Right.
Right, you borrow money from the bank, when you buy your house, and you put in the solar, and hopefully you live there twenty years so that you get your your amount back. And that's what I did, I'm not getting any payback, I'm just not burning, you know, propane or coal or, you know, whatever.
Yeah. But so what if, what if there were ten houses, and they said, okay, we're gonna forget the power company, we're gonna put in our own solar, our own house, we're gonna run the wires underground to our ten houses.
Yeah.
You can do that, right?
Need storage, need storage.
And you would go and get some Tesla Power Walls to uh to store.
Right, right, and put it in, yeah.
Yeah, and then you're really starting to rack up the the charging.
Yeah, but it's still, it's clean energy.
Clean energy, but I mean, once you start getting those Power Walls.
Right, but I think in the future, I think what the power companies are gonna do, as more and more people generate their own, they're just gonna raise the distribution charge.
Yes.
Right now, I pay more for distribution than I do for electricity, 'cause I get money for direct energy, I'm locked in an eight point nine cents, eight point eight nine cents a cap a kilowatt.
Yes. Yeah.
So EverSource charges me more than I pay for electricity.
My propane company charges me more because I use less propane, I get that.
Yeah, and that's why.
Yeah, so so let's just say, let's just say, it's built into the system that they're gonna, they're gonna screw it.
That's a different. And what's.
One way or the other.
Yes, what's nice about the way we approach this is, we don't care how you organize it.
Right.
If you wanna build something as big as this tabletop, that's cool, if you wanna build something up to two thousand square feet, as long as you got the available lot coverage of your lot. Dr. David, he's he can build, he's a whizcom, if you want us to build something big, you can't, you can't run the wires down these little roads, and.
Yeah, I I agree.
And and how you work out the financing, we don't care, we're setting up the rules for making it so that.
Right, I agree.
It it is good for the town.
So, so we're, people should think about the twenty thousand square feet and the four hundred kilowatts for the large SESs, but what we really need to address now is.
Is it twenty thousand, is it, is it, is it, oh, so is it, is it two thousand?
Two thousand, up to two thousand.
Two thousand.
Up to twenty thousand.
Up to twenty.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, up to, what did I say?
Okay, just, just.
Did I say something wrong?
He just said twenty thousand, and I was like, well, that's the high point, it's not like.
Yeah, up to, up to.
It's not the, the, the normal.
Which is somewhere around four hundred kilowatts.
Right.
Right, so the, what we need to think about is this, the conditional use permit um stuff. And um, I mean, some of the things that we, I think it's in the, in the question here.
There are some things that, yeah.
Um, we're large, we're some, oh, yeah, yeah, so some of the things listed here are setbacks, visual buffers, screening, spacing of rows, minimal environmental disruption, fencing, fencing and decommissioning.
See, these are, I took these from some of the, from the town, some of them sounded interesting, right, sounded.
Oh, that's great. So could you send that to everybody, uh, scan it and send it or something?
Yeah.
If you could take a picture of it and send it to David, and then send it to all those.
Right. Do you, do you?
I mean, I just, I didn't even read it.
Or you can scan it on your phone, you know.
I can scan it on our high-speed scanner and.
So is it just page one or or the back two?
Well, the back is decommissioned.
Yeah, well, we need to deal with it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, this is kinda these scribbles, I hope we can read it.
We'll, we'll be able to figure it out, so that's, that's really helpful, and so, so for the next meeting, let's assign ourselves um getting to uh the issue of of what the criteria are for the large uh, the large SESs.
Right.
And then, and I'm I'm not quite getting, I guess, do we need, we're taking it out of the accessory use section. So this would be, would say, we're gonna call this article whatever the number, you know, article X. Um, we'll have an introduction saying what the purpose of it is, right?
Why are we taking it out of the accessory use section?
Uh, it was unwieldy, I mean.
'Cause it doesn't apply.
We we were do, we were doing it to fit into that, but the the way we wrote it doesn't really make sense. Um, we have.
So definitions go in the definition section, and then we just put a.
Then we just, so here we have the building footprint, blah, 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 and I suppose we could do it in here, it's an option.
I I think, why not, it's just like a, a sign, or a garage, or a shed, or, you know, something like that, it's nothing special, it's not like.
Well, is, is the lo, are the large SESs, um.
Large SESs are not, I mean, they're, they're not dealt, they're not ground mounted solar energy system, I see what you're saying, um.
I mean, with, my question is, would a half acre, if we're, if we stick with this, if it's a half acre SES, is that an accessory use?
Like, no, 'cause I think we want it to be able to sit on its own a lot.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's the point.
Really?
Yeah, the big ones, I mean, they they should be able to go on somebody's big property.
Oh, oh, I see, so.
Yeah, so that's a, that's a different use.
So I, I don't think an accessory use would work.
Well, no, we just say, um, the, whatever, whatever you call any small ones, what do you call them?
A small solar.
Small SESs are allowed as an accessory use on a lot, because it's small.
And then what, where do we put?
And then the large are added into the zoning ordinance as a uh use allowed by conditional use in table five point one, or whatever the table number is.
Okay.
And we, not, not, not five point one, the use one.
Four point.
Four point. Four point one, sorry, uh, and so it just becomes a use that goes in here, and we say yes, no, or whatever, so.
David, does that sound habitable to you?
Um, I have not been listening, 'cause I've been trying to.
Okay, so what I'm saying is that the large SES is a use.
Yeah.
Which goes into this table, and by district, we say yes or no, or conditional use, well, we say conditional use wherever we mean yes.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
And 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 what he was saying is that we would have the small SES as an accessory.
Right.
That'd be enforceable for you and.
Yeah.
Okay, so there.
Yeah, 'cause that makes perfect sense, you would just, I would define the small SES as accessory use.
Yeah, but just small solar energy systems are allowed as an accessory use on a lot.
Perfect.
Yeah, but which we already have, under four point four two.
Yeah, that's all, and that's all we need.
That's all we need, except that what if Rich wants to put only a small one on his lot with nothing else there? We're gonna make him bump into the, it's gotta be bigger, if it goes, say there's no house on the lot, and all he has is this vacant lot, and he wants to put something that's qualifies as a small.
So.
Are we gonna make him put one more panel on, so it is a large? I mean.
I mean, actually, a large is something, oh, yeah, let me, let me throw another question in there, and maybe that'll clarify things.
Okay.
What if somebody wants to, has a large lot, I mean, you know, Bailey Farm.
Right.
Wants to have a large array, um, a large, this.
Well, it's just in the district, it's fine, it can be on the same lot.
Okay, cool.
What was your question?
So the concern was that if it's um, that it would, we want to allow it as a primary use on a.
All alone.
On a, on a parcel, they got this, it's this field, there's nothing growing here, it's just terrible, but we could put solar panels on. Could the Bailey Farm also put a large array there, and it sounds like, yes.
I mean, I think.
To get a conditional use permit on a lot.
You'd have, why couldn't?
Because it's not accessory to the park use, it's a, for the lot principal use on a lot.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Oh, I see, I see. So, and then, all right, so, I understand the question, so the answer, why would they be allowed to, even though we're saying it's an accessory use?
We're not, we're talking about a large.
Oh, a large, okay, oh, there's a large, okay.
Yeah. But, I mean, I would want a large to be a feasible, either as a primary use on a lot, or.
Yeah, but we're taking it out of of accessory, right? So that would, that would eliminate.
Right. We're gonna say, somewhere, larges can go in certain places here, and somewhere in the text, we're gonna say larges may also exist as a um additional use on a lot.
Anything as an accessory.
Yes.
Like as a, you know, just like we allow the mixed use more than one principal.
All right, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to nail that language down.
Yeah, 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 but that, we've done it for other, other things, so we can do that for this.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so the large, we, our, our goal is to.
Put it into four point one as a use, and then we would put something like, under, well, four point four one, right?
Yeah.
Talks out principal buildings and activities, um, so it's for a solar, just like we put senior housing, we can put a large SES.
Right.
And I could go.
Right.
Right into there. Four point four one, we talk about principal building and activity, so it's one of those exceptions. The exception, unless otherwise approved, as a large SES.
Okay.
Are there lots that are?
No, 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 lots, it's a, it's a whole thing, it's, it's approved as a, I understand, but this is one more situation where a large is a conditional use, larges use, whatever.
Right, but there's.
Right, okay. Okay.
Just becomes one of those things that can be more than one principal activity on a lot.
So.
And then, and then, Vicky, you said that it, someplace it needs to say that it can also be an additional use on a front, uh, for a lot that I think has a primary use.
Right, I mean, here, I mean, here, it's added to four point one.
Right, yes.
As a large SES, and I don't know if we're gonna call it uh business, uh, yeah, probably, and then we just say line center, conditional use, one common, conditional. Uh, no, 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 we're not gonna allow them, so we say no, no, commercial, I don't know what we say about that.
Yeah, right, sure, we can think.
I think we have to be careful about, you know, calling it, whether we say it commercial or business, we have to really think that through.
Well, it is a business.
I mean. Is it, is it indisputably a business?
I think so, sure, I mean, uh, it costs thirty dollars a kilowatt um to install.
Suppose, well, I mean, maybe this is a good thing, but I'm, maybe we don't want this, but supposing, you know, Elon Musk moves to line.
Right.
And he has a whole bunch of land.
Yes.
And he wants to power his uh, his rocket ship, he's got a little rocket ship.
Or his, or his, we.
Yeah, a fleet of Teslas.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, so what we're saying is that a private individual of that wealth.
Yes.
Um, would not be allowed, it would not be a business, it would be for a private use, we're saying this is just for business.
Well, it's a matter of labeling, if you think that it needs a separate label, fine, I don't think it's agriculture, I don't think it's residential, I don't think it's institutional, it kind of falls in.
Maybe, maybe it'll be large SES.
Yeah, so.
I would just put it down as a large SES.
Large SES, in its own category.
Someone wants to.
I wouldn't, um, anywhere to say that it has to be for business use or.
Yeah, I wouldn't either.
No, no.
Although, although I will say that a, a four hundred kilowatt array at current pricing is about one point two million dollars.
Right.
So, I mean, Elon Musk could come in.
Right.
And power his little rocket ship.
Or if the people in town could afford to.
I I just wonder whether it's necessary to define it as business.
I don't think it is, because you, that way, if you have somebody who wants to, you know, have, they have a McMansion, a fleet of uh electric vehicles.
They can power them instead of burning fossil fuel.
Yeah, you're, you're, you would enable them to power it.
Right, so what do, what do we care whether it's a business?
Yeah, I think that's, the, the thing is, don't care about where the power is going.
Right, we're not, we're trying to stay away from the use.
And you're just dealing with the land use of.
Right.
Right.
The, the systems.
Right. Okay.
Uh, so that, uh, those notes from Tim on conditional use, I've scanned them, and everybody should have them.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
We have a, no, high-speed scanner that zips that stuff through, it's fantastic.
Wonderful, um, so this, this is seem like a pretty good framework, um, and then we, we can take it to the next level.
Yeah.
Next time.
Yeah, we're getting pretty close.
Yeah, well, I mean, and this, this'll get into what, what you were raising, so why don't we just shift into that? Why don't you say what you, what you have to say, and and as to getting close, we'll take it from there.
So I said, uh, I know, well, you saw the note that I sent to John, asking how are we gonna handle the, the, the meeting today with both the solar energy amendment and the, in the housing chapter, and I think, I know there's some people that are interested in the housing chapter, uh, and they, they don't wanna come to the meeting unless, unless we're gonna talk about it.
Right.
So, uh, the, the question that I, I put to the, to the group is how do we wanna handle the scheduling of this, um, you know, the suggestion I had to John, that maybe we could do half solar energy and the second half housing? Another way to do it was to take, to continue to work on this privately and, and bring it to a meeting uh two times from now, and talk about the housing chapter, get us started on the housing chapter. As I think more about it, we're gonna have a ton of questions in the housing chapter, um, and so.
We don't even have a housing chapter, so we're like, there's a.
I mean, we're just getting started with the housing chapter, we're gonna have a ton of questions, and so having a two-hour time slot to talk about it. One, we're gonna run into a whole mess of questions, we don't, we don't wanna go away and think about it. We would be better served scheduling an, an hour on the housing chapter for a couple times till we get started, and that'll give us a chance to keep working on that.
I'll tell you.
That's, that's my consideration.
Right, I appreciate that. Um, and this is just based on history.
Mm-hmm.
We had, we gave ourselves a, a deadline I think we should stick to, and if we can finish ahead, great, but we said first meeting in October. That's, if you include.
To finish the.
To finish this, and that's, that gives us five more meetings after tonight. There has just been so many, first of all, we can get a case, or we can get two cases that come out of nowhere. And the point of having it at a deadline in October was because every, I mean, I swear, every time we've done an amendment, we get, we have unexpected things, we get pushed to the last second. And then we're, we're dealing with, we, if we can't get it done tonight.
We're out of the guns.
So, you know, the housing chat, what I recall that we said is, the priority is SES, let's get it done.
Okay.
And, and if we have time at the ends of meeting, we can get into the housing chapter, in terms of people who are concerned, um, you know, who wanna be involved from the beginning, I would say that we'll, we will have a formal start, once we're done with this, and that's when they should, that's when they should get involved.
Right.
Unless, I mean, they're certainly welcome to send us um emails about what their thoughts are ahead of the time.
Yep.
But I, I really think we'll be taking a risk by diverting our time from this, and what is everybody else thinking?
Yeah, I agree, 'cause I think we did say we're gonna try to finish this, and then you can go on, but it doesn't. It should, we should be able to do it even before October, if we.
It should, we should be able to do it even before October if we, if we.
If we do, then, then we go right to the housing chapter.
Then it's a, a win.
Yeah.
It's a huge win.
That's right.
And, and, God forbid, we slop over and we're in the second meeting of October and we get it done. We're still.
That's, that's, we're still good.
Plenty of time.
I mean, the thing about the housing chapter is, there'll be a start date.
Okay.
And the start date will be when, when people should, who are interested should focus.
And, and so, um, part of, part of the consternation that some of my friends had was, the housing chapter is warned for this being.
Yeah, so I think, and apropos to that, I think a good thing, we can either take it out, which I, we can, or we can just add language, uh, like as, as possible or something.
I think, yeah, that's the reason it's in there. And, and the thing is that no matter which way, if I put it in or take it out.
Yeah, one way or the other, the public is gonna be misled.
You know, if the board is there, the board doesn't discuss it, people will be unhappy because they wanted to hear and there was no discussion. If I take it out and the board has a few extra minutes, legally, there is no requirement for that to be on the agenda for the board to discuss it. There's no legal requirement for an agenda to be posted. The only time you have to post meetings is if the board is here.
So.
So, it is a, a, basically, uh, the agendas get posted, um, so that the public know what the planning board is doing. So, it's, you know, for their benefit, but not, it's not a legal, um.
So, what if we just put language as, as, if possible? You know, so, so people.
Time permitting.
Time permitting, even, even better. So that people understand, yeah, I mean, I think that a lot of people think about it understandably as like the, the zoning board, where there's a case, it's gonna be at this time. But when we're talking, we're, we're dealing with conceptual issues.
Right.
And you know what, you know what can happen.
Right.
So, if, uh, time permitting is a good way to put it.
I mean, if you look at the select board agenda, they usually have a non-public session if necessary.
Right, sure.
And that's the same thing, you know, and, and so they're saying, we may sometimes be necessary for a non-public, so we'll go into it. And we're warning you ahead of time, we may do this, but only if it was necessary. Although, it's a little bit different for the non-public session, because in a non-public session, you couldn't be there anyway.
Right.
So.
Yeah, it's different. But anyways, I mean.
Well, I'm saying, that's why it's on the agenda that way, if necessary.
Sure.
And, and time it at the end, so everybody gets to hear the.
Time permitting, I think is a, is a good way to handle it.
I'm, I'm gonna disagree with, with you and say I, I'm not fond of that. I think.
What would you like?
I, I would like something certain for residents. I mean, we're a lot to go with. Um, you know, or certainly if we had a few minutes to organize our thoughts and say, maybe we should.
Well, I mean, look.
We're doing this for other residents. There are a lot of people interested in this and are waiting for this.
I agree, I agree.
And I think we.
Oh, I, I'm not suggesting.
I, I don't, I don't think that move.
So, so John, I'm, I'm accepting.
We're gonna, we're gonna.
Well, I'm accepting your decision.
I understand. It's not my decision, it's the board's decision.
Okay. Yeah, cause we're gonna have a definite starting point for the housing, right?
I, I don't, I don't, I don't see the advantage of, I see about the confusion, which I think the time permitting clears up. Other than that, I don't see a benefit to taking our attention away from this until we're finished.
I also think sometimes having.
I, I grant that.
Information or, you know, some, when you're writing a, a housing chapter, having some discussions that you can prevent, present information at the beginning to people, saying, okay, here's what we're planning on doing.
Mm-hmm.
Makes it a little easier than having that discussion and having to go back and forth.
Yeah, I think it'll drive us crazy.
Um, public, you know, so, having some of the discussions upfront to say, okay, here's our plan, let the board develop that plan. It can change, but at least you're, you're, you can give something ahead of time when you're, okay, we're ready to go with this and here's how we wanna proceed. And people say, whoa, we don't like this. And the board can change that, but at least there's a starting point for that negotiation. All right?
Sorry, sorry. Anyway, is, is, do most people agree with that?
Yeah.
Vicky or?
I, I wanna get this thing done because it's going really bad.
So, so, the consensus anyway is, is, I do that.
And, I wanna get this done too. I mean.
I know you do. I know, I know you do. I, I understand. Um, so, just one more thing. The thing that, that Tim sent around.
What did he send around?
It's, it's from an LA Times, Times Herald.
I forwarded it this morning.
Solar panels. And, and this is something that, you know, this isn't, I'm not saying this like I'm totally on board with this. I think, you know, it's a net gain. But I do think that when people talk about, um, the, the degree of net gain, whether it's electric vehicles or, or these, um, the panels. It's always, it's always spoken of, oh, okay, you got a panel installed in your yard, or you got your EV, Tesla brought it to your house. And so, from now, it's just this very black and white thing. But what this article points out, and what other, other articles point out, is the unmentioned, and sometimes unmentionable ramifications and costs of electric vehicles and, um, solar panels that California is apparently having a lot of problems with, with the decommissioning. And.
Yeah.
Toxic chemicals. This isn't even talking about, you know, where the, where these things are originated from and the, the working conditions. Um, and I think, I think we should be doing this, and I think we should also have our eyes wide open about, uh, the fact that it's not quite as pure as people like to think of it.
Yeah, it's certainly something to think about. I mean, I think what, what the article was saying, I, I spoke to you, but you see it, you put.
I did, I, I got it, yes.
But I think what they were saying basically was that they're starting, California's starting to have all these issues because now these twenty-five-year-old panels are coming up. It only cost, I think they said in there, they only get two to four dollars of value from all the stuff that's in the panels you have to recycle. And it takes all these expert people to take it apart. So, there's no financial incentive to recycle these things. So, now, what the hell are they gonna do? You know, it's like, anyway, it's just something to think about.
So, I mean, I, I should've read the article. Uh, do they simply not function? Do those panels simply not function? Or do they not function efficiently? Or?
I think they were saying that, they mentioned twenty-five years, you know, now, because twenty-five years ago, I guess they put it a lot. And that was the, I think they said something to the effect that it was very life-threatening. You know, they were done.
Right.
So, then what are you, what are you gonna do with all this?
I mean, if, obviously, if they still work, you leave them. I mean, but at some point.
Well, the, the premise is that they degrade over time and they lose their efficiency.
Right, so.
That's right.
If mine don't work anymore, I'm gonna call the solar people, come and replace them, take them away, and just a fire refrigerator, um, you know, put in a new one, take old ones away. And I don't know, they'll, they'll, they're gonna be doing something with it.
What happens to your refrigerator?
The big things, yeah, right, I know. Well, hopefully it goes to, you know, so I'm gonna actually put it on the list service, so, um, to see if someone wants it, cause it's totally fine. But, yeah, it's, it's gonna be, I think, a service that the solar providers are gonna need to do, cause I only have only one roof. And, you know, I wanna replace my panels, so.
Yeah, and evidently in California, it's not happening, so they.
Well, it's not happening on, on the large installations, and that's why we need the decommissioning.
Yeah, but I mean, even in the small stuff, cause it, it sounds like there's not enough money there to.
Well, it's like, it's like the satellite dishes.
Yeah.
Right.
That, that ended up to be a landfill item.
Right.
Nothing, you know, good about it. Um, yeah.
Yeah, they said eighty percent of a panel is recyclable, or is okay. And then the other twenty percent's got all this fat stuff in it.
What about your car? What about your washing machine?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's just like all that waste.
That's true.
Yeah.
You know what, we are just a wash and.
Your, your clothes that don't fit anymore. I mean, that is like a huge, the textiles, well, it takes a huge amount of landfill space.
Cars, they put, they give a huge, that's a big, and I think.
But still, it takes up a lot when you kinda hold the cars.
Yeah, but I think they reduce, I think they do recycle.
Well, they develop them down.
Develop them down.
Interesting, just on the spec sheet for, uh, the, the fourth hundred-watt panels, um, they actually have the, uh, the degradation annually is, uh, point two five percent yearly.
Point two five. So, every four years, you're, you're down a percent.
Yep. And, but it says power in twenty-five, or in year twenty-five, you're at, still at ninety-two percent. So.
That's pretty good.
If, if that's correct, then that's a good thing that they're.
And that's that panel, not the ones I installed five years ago.
Yeah, and not the ones in, in California.
Right, but I'm saying that, that, you know, that's something else to consider, that, you know, yes, we have a problem. But I think the industry is.
Yeah.
Looking at, at ways, because, you know, that.
Yeah.
Yeah, because all of these things are gonna have to be addressed.
Yeah, yeah. But I think it's gonna be addressed, like, you know, a lot of, uh, the auto manufacturers, you know, battery manufacturers have, you know, it's been addressed, the issue of lead-acid batteries. If you buy a new one, you pay a core charge to.
Bring back the old one.
To bring back the old one. And, so.
Yeah, well, hopefully it'll get better.
Everything's gonna be fine. I, I think, I, I think I've told you before that. I, I, I have the, the number, the phone number of the home office. I called in the home office cause I was concerned with what I heard in the news. And they told me everything's gonna be fine. Really, not gonna be a problem. It just looks bad now. So. All right, folks, um, what do you say? Anything else?
Uh, so, what we wanna do is look at the decommissioning standards for next time and the conditional use.
Well, you had more, you had more than just decommissioning. It was all, all the.
And conditional use and decommissioning.
Yeah, I think David, you did the backside. Yeah, and this was just stuff like, took it out of this.
Well, that's great.
Yeah, and it's a starting point. I'm not, I'm not, um.
We need a starting point. You did us a big favor.
Right.
Yeah.
We're not gonna hold you to it.
Yeah, well.
So, they wanna take a step of writing?
Writing what?
The first draft of file language.
You're, you're, when, when somebody asks a question, the thing is.
All right, all right.
You're welcome to.
I'll take a shot at it.
Take a shot at it. Great. Um, all right, so are we done? So, everybody's homework is to work on the CUP criteria. And, uh, Rich has foolishly, uh, and nicely, uh, volunteered to.
Where's Pepe when you need her?
No, 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 we're gonna use her for the final version that needs to go out and keep the review.
Uh, the housing chapter, you could have her.
Well, we're gonna have, we're gonna use her. Don't worry about it.
All right, so, uh, I'd like to make a motion to, to close the meeting.
Second.
Rich seconds. All in favor of everybody?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Great work.
Rich, just, just so you know, get you to see that, Nancy, it, who was it, wasn't it? Or I told her, I let everybody know, I, you know, that, they're having all those people, we're gonna speak.
This is August.
Yeah, just call that number on the bottom if you're interested.
Yeah, yeah.
Ben's, yeah, Ben.
Lynn reads their magazine cover.
I do too. It's great.
I've thumbed through it some and, and it is pretty good. Thank you for showing me. Right.
Yeah, thanks for this book.
Oh, yeah, that's pretty interesting. Have you read this, Vicky?
No.
So, um, this is pretty good. This is The Golden Spruce.
Okay, okay.
This guy, John Willant, he wrote this. This is, I would say, is a very good book. The other book he wrote called The Tiger, uh, which it takes, it's about the, um, what is that called? Our, our Oriole Forest in the, in the eastern, on the very eastern coast